Joining us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'm so sorry.
You're fine. Take your time. Welcome to our Monday, August 18th School Board Meeting. We will start with our Agenda, Approval, Deletions, Additions. Dr. Varaco.
Thank you, Mrs. Seuss. You do have some revisions in the Personnel Packet under Roman numeral seven, B1. Mrs. Castaneda has some updates. That is at your workstation. Everything else is the same as you received last Thursday.
Motion by Dr. Malco. I will second that. Any discussion? Questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there any correspondence this evening, Ms. Kelly?
Yes, I have one letter that was sent to Dr. Varaco from the Chief of Police for Dyer, Chief Alcott. I will read that for you. "Dr. Varaco, I am writing this letter to thank you for allowing the Lake Central High School Boys Soccer Team, Dance Team, and Cheer Team to volunteer for our National Night Out. Their participation helped to make our night a success. They represented the Lake Central High School in a manner that we can all be proud of. In addition to the participation of the administration and PTO of both Kaler Middle School and Protsman Elementary School, which was all coordinated by Associate Principal Richard Moore, thank you once again, William Alcott, Chief of Police for Dyer." Thank you.
Very nice letter.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Oh, was I? Sorry.
All right, we'll move into our Liaison Committee Updates. We'll start with Ms. Kelly.
I don't have anything for redevelopment. Discussions continue to go on between the Park Board and the Town Council in regards to the Iliana property, so I will keep you posted, but that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Talent?
I do not have anything to report for the Wellness Committee other than that they will be meeting this fall, and as far as the Dyer Redevelopment Committee meeting, it will be coming up. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Malco?
For Lake Central Education Foundation, just a reminder that their grants are coming out in the near future. Grant Round 63 will come out on August 18th, so that's very soon. It will be due back in almost a month, which will be September 29th. And then the C grant, if you remember, that's the one, that's a larger amount of money, up to $5,000. That could be really exciting, and that one is, will come out in November 3rd and not due until March 30th. For the Legislative, I've started working on that in my mind, my planning, but I will send an email out to all of you to let you know what I was thinking. And I see that Mrs. Seuss is going to be on a state-level committee to help craft the items, so that's pretty cool. And let's see, what's the other one? Oh, the Parks Department. They're working, and they're going to be building a, sort of like a auditorium, exterior auditorium, what do they call them?
Like a band auditorium.
Band auditorium, yeah. Anyway, if you go by, you can see the big machinery working out there. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
And for my two committees, the only one that's active right now, well, we're very active right now, is Dollars for Scholars. We are gearing up for homecoming, so hopefully the kids will find it as exciting as they have every other year, so. But that will go to our official School Board Business Topics Consent Agenda. Dr. Varaco?
Thank you again. Seek Board Approval for the minutes from our Special Board Meeting/Work Session on Monday, August 4th, as well as our regular Board Meeting, Monday, August 4th, and seek Board Approval for the Claims, Payroll, and Extracurricular Expenditures you received in your packets.
Motion to approve?
Motion for Ms. Kelly?
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Talent. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. There's no public comments regarding action items, so we'll move into our official School Board Business Topics Regular Agenda. Dr. Varaco?
Thank you. Just wanted to let the Board know that we did have what I consider to be a very smooth start to the school year, so want to thank all of our staff for being ready for all of our children to come back. Central Office Administrators were able to get spread across the district last Wednesday to help greet students, and we saw a lot of happy faces. I was able to get to the High School Watson and Grimmer, and there was a lot of energy in those buildings, and a lot of, you know, people still not knowing exactly where to go, but it all worked out. Other than a couple of mechanical problems with buses, I think things seem to be off to a pretty great start. Superintendent's Visi- Superintendent visits to schools began today at Kaler. All schools will be visited during the first two weeks of school. We're sharing a recap of recent student-staff successes, test scores, a legislative update, and other pertinent information. We also plan to meet with the Food Service and Transportation Departments. As for total enrollment, which is an always question we get early in the year, it's difficult to pinpoint it just yet because of late enrollments, as well as some students who have not yet reported. Our schools are aggressively contacting those parents to find out if they're returning to school. And just so you know, we need to have an official count by October 1st. That's when we turn it in, and it's supposed to be tight by then, but that gives us plenty of time. So, just want the Board to know that it seems like we're off to a good start. Thank you to all of our staff who were ready and greeting kids with happy faces. Thank you.
That's great to hear. Thank you. Our Director of Primary, no, excuse me, our Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Castaneda.
Thank you. I only have one item this evening. I am seeking the Board's approval for the Personnel Recommendations, the revised copy that you received this evening.
So moved. Motion from Dr. Malco?
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Kelly. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our Director of Primary Education, Dr. Bracy.
Good evening. For my first item, I am seeking your approval for the Professional Leave Request in your packets.
So moved. Motion for Mrs. Talent. I will second that. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. For my second item, each year we are required to update our Plan for Staff Evaluation, and so I have the Certified Evaluation Plan first, so I need, I'm seeking your approval on that.
Motion to approve?
Motion for Ms. Kelly.
Second?
Second from Dr. Malco. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. For my third item, I also have the Plan for Administrators, and so I am seeking your approval on the Plan for Staff Evaluation for Administrators.
So moved. Motion from Ms. Talent, and I will second that. Any discussion?
I do have a question, and I'm sorry, I was trying to do multiple things over here at one time, and I'm not good at that, but, correct my memory, at one point in time, teachers had to show growth, student growth, on their plans, and it seems to me like that was taken away?
Are you referring to when we used to have SLOs?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Are you referring to when we used to have the SLOs for teachers?
The what?
SLOs.
Yeah, the SLOs. That's right.
Yes, Student Learning Objectives. We don't have those anymore, so that's why it's not in the plan.
Okay. And Principals, Administrators don't have those either?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
I wonder why.
Are you projecting this?
I am.
Is that a hundred?
Yes.
Yes.
You're fine. So I finally enable, am able to share the long-awaited IREDS results from the state of Indiana. As you know, last year, Senate Bill One required for all third-grade students to pass IREDS in order to go on to fourth grade, and anyone who has heard any of our messages knows that we did not agree with students being retained in third grade based on IREDS scores. So, IREDS again, two-thirds of the test focuses on comprehension, and one-third is on reading foundations, so you can see what is covered pretty much under Foundations, and then under nonfiction and reading literature. Our historical data, typically our district has always been above the state average for IREDS III. If you can see in 2021, we were 91.2, 89.7, 92.7, 91.8. Last week, on Wednesday, the state of Indiana released the scores for this year for all schools of Indiana. So, let me back up a little bit. Maybe, maybe about a year and a half ago, we were required to write a goal for reading for our elementary students. And so our goal was, by the end of the 24-25 school year, 92% of the students would demonstrate proficiency in foundational reading skills as measured by the IREDS III Administration. So it had to be specific. It was very specific. It had to be measurable. We felt like it was measurable. We felt like it was attainable. It was absolutely relevant, and we also had a timeline because we said by the end of 24-25, 92% of our students would demonstrate proficiency on IREDS III. Did we meet our goal of 92%? Last week, we found out that 93.1% of our students, our third-grade students, passed IREDS, which is amazing. So if you look, the state average for this year was 87.3, so we're well above the state average, which is amazing. But that's not it. We have even greater news. We have zero current students who are retained in third grade based on IREDS. Zero. So, I looked up other words for zero, and it was like, none, not a soul, not a bit, no one, not anyone. Like, I could go on all day long, but zero. You get the point. So how is that possible? It's because of our amazing staff. All of our teachers work together, but we were able to, our, actually, our Special Education staff and our EL teachers, they were able to work with those students who have qualifying IEPs and ILPs, and they all received good cause exemptions. So actually, even though the number says 93.1, it's really 100% because all of our students went on to fourth grade. So, our future goals, because we had to write three goals last year, a year and a half ago, so if you notice, we already surpassed the goal for this school year because we said by the end of 25-26, 93% of our students would demonstrate mastery. We said by the end of 26-27, our goal is 95%. So that gives us all of this year and all of next year to work towards that 95% goal, which I'm sure we're going to master, or we're going to hit. So, let's give honor to whom honor is due. Let's give our elementary schools a round of applause for their hard work in making sure our students accomplish this amazing milestone. So kudos to all of our elementary schools. Let's thank all of our families for working with their children at home and making sure this was accomplished because they had to partner with us as well, so kudos to all of our families. Thank you so much. Any questions?
So the students with a qualified IEP and an ILP were exempt?
Correct. No, they had to take the test. They were exempt from being retained if they did not pass the test.
How did they do that? I'm curious.
Well, if you see the 93.1, they are included in that number, so that tells you that the majority of our students, even those with IEPs and ILPs, passed IREDS.
We, we had a relatively, I don't, I could look up the number of exemptions and get it to you, but we still, we had a relatively small number of exemptions between those two groups. So, even with our students with IEPs and ILPs, most of them did pass.
That's really good.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
We can get that for you.
And you know, I'm really proud, not only of what you've done at Lake Central, but one of our former Lake Central teachers and athletic directors is now a superintendent in Hebron, Jeff Brooks, and his students, I believe, were the highest in the region, maybe 971.
Okay.
Did you hear that?
I did not. I only focused on Lake Central.
Ryder's workshop for our second grade.
That's awesome. Don't worry, we'll catch up with them. We'll be there.
Well, I think he's got a great foundation for being here for 20 years, working elementary. That's so cool. I'm really proud.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. That's to our staff. I don't take the credit. They did the work.
Absolutely.
Any more questions before I go to my next item? Okay, I feel like I'm the one dragging out our meeting tonight. So, our last item, we all know that without a vision, we perish, right? And so we want to make sure that all of our schools have a vision. And so this summer, I challenged all of our elementary principals to come up with a vision for their school. I asked them all to write a vision plan, or a vision story. So I had asked them to focus on two areas in their building that might need a little bit of support, a little bit of improvement, and what they see now in those areas, what they would like to see, and how they're going to get there. And then I had asked them to share those visions with their staff. So, Allison Petroya, the principal at Bibich, is here to share her vision story with you all tonight. Come on up, Allison. She's nervous.
Good evening. So, Dr. Bracy did, at one of our principal meetings this summer, she did challenge us at the end of a meeting. She said, you know, "Log in. I had sent you something with your name on it." And it was a pretty vulnerable moment, I mean, to identify. I took it as an area of reflection. So, basically, this was what it said at the top. Picture yourself entering the main entrance of your school. What would you like to see? What is your vision for the main office, the hallways, the classrooms, the cafeteria, or any other area in your school? Start writing your vision here. Don't worry, it can change as the year goes on. We will revisit, and you will be able to revise your vision from your school. What would you like to see in each area of your school? Focus on two to start. So, you know, this was over the summer, so it was after May, and a little more clear-headed, not so crazy, right? Not all the hustle-bustle. So I feel like we were able to kind of think a little more clearly, and, so, I, this is very raw and real. This was my, where's the, oh, right here. No, that's okay. Thank you. So, I, these were the two that I identified. So at the front entrance, I see a crowd of adults welcoming students and talking together as students arrive. We have a very loving staff. They love each other. They love the kids. They love the families. But what I would like to see is only a couple adults welcoming students more throughout the building. And I'd really like to focus on, now, I don't want to say that this is necessarily an area of improvement, more, let's use the words, area of opportunity. So, not that we're doing anything wrong. We're talking with our colleagues who we love, we love to be with every day, but is our focus the kids? Do the kids know I'm coming in, they're excited to see me, or do they think that they're just the bonus to what's happening here? They should be the, the main part, the main focus. And then the second part that I identified was Bibich did have an Applied Skills class come to us last year. I do see we have very well-trained staff. We have a great teacher in that position, but I do see, for the most part, paras from the Applied Skills class responding to those students' needs in Applied Skills. What I'd like to see is all adults responding to their needs. And I think that that's just kind of a mindset. I think that it's, we need to identify, you know, when we're in that situation, I mean, myself included, I might say, "Oh, well, that para knows his needs better than I do, so I'm going to let her handle it." Well, why can't, why couldn't I stick my neck out there? Why couldn't I have a conversation? And just identifying that, and, and in the situation, doing better. So, it was a little uncomfortable to identify some areas, but how do we grow unless we do have a vision and identify an area where we could grow? So, I have, the second one is where I started, just because I feel like it was a little more pressing to me. And we have been very purposeful with our para schedule. Ashley Mitch, our Assistant Principal-